I played a most significant in Schwumpstadt. I live out in Blue Rock and I'm getting tired of the time that's been there. I've been working hard for eight years.
Uh, Jim Spanger, South Carolina. You know, Chad Newton, love it. And I like South Carolina just as much. Jerry Dupree, Dr. Chad Newton, Bob Long, Greta, retired. And I, uh, we had a good year last year, but none of us made it to the big leagues. But you gotta keep on, keep on going, keep trying to get there.
My name is Kerry Greer, Dr. Chad Newton, head office in the world, I'm a pharmacist assistant.
Rob Johnson, everybody in this thing knows you're Rob Johnson. Uh, I was raised in Virgus, Virginia, for military. I could, uh, get a few years over, uh, and then follow this and, uh, be a parent. I came back home and talked to a little mom and she's like, oh, my goodness. Good years, but it took a while, uh, to complete. And, uh, he's got, I say, must they, uh, had the same as I might, years and years and years. You got something with you that's, uh, you're not going to, you're going to get what you're thinking of. So I'm coming up, coming out, just getting started.
I'm Brian Dickey, I'm from Clearwater, Florida. I'm retired. I take care of my middle leaves and my back, which, uh, I have taken care of after all the years of sports, but it's not just for sports, it's, uh, if you have a good time with sports, it's going to work well. I was in construction business for thirty-two years, retired six times. Uh, you get bored in the new part, the back of work, you swing over again. But I played, uh, I played right field and, uh, and pitching. And these were the best guys in the world in that board in all these games. I picked them, won sixty-seven games and lost three.
Hmm, wow, jeez.
It's funny, nobody's got.
All right, Perry Dickey, Dr. Chad Newton, I'm from South Carolina, hired and I would say we're going to go to each one.
Thank you very much, guys. And Perry, you want to introduce yourself?
And I'm Perry Perkins. I played catcher in right field. The coach's son played catcher, so I played right field. And, uh, no, everybody on the team were great, great guys. We've all been good friends. The, the, I think the most important thing about these guys is we all came together and played as a team, no ego. The best guy on the team is not with us. Bobby Edmondson passed away, if you see, on the back of our caps, that we've got in honor of Bobby. Uh, he played for Kansas City for, I think, for a year and got hurt. But, uh, if you, we just encourage you to play sports and we encourage you to support, uh, sports with your, with your city. And I, I want to tell you, thank you for, give us a few minutes to be here.
Okay, don't sit down yet. Greta?
Thank you. Just really quickly, like I said, I know you've had a long afternoon, but, um, we just, how honored and privileged we are to be in your presence today. Um, without you, we would not be able to do what we do through our recreation department and our RBI program. And I just really quickly wanted to take a minute and, um, let you know where we are with this program right now, so that you guys can hear the progress that you've helped pave the way for. Um, and I'm, before I do that, I want to extend one more invite. Our teams will be traveling to Atlanta for the RBI World Series on, um, July twenty-fifth, and we would love for you to come and be there to send our teams off. Uh, so right now, in our baseball division, we have our junior and senior teams. We have a total of thirty boys' teams, three hundred and forty-five players. In our softball division, which is ages five up to eighteen, we have forty-seven teams with five hundred and ninety-one kids playing in our program. Um, this is another stat that's going to blow your mind. Our volunteer coaches, for softball, we have a hundred and nineteen volunteer coaches, and for baseball, we have forty-five volunteer coaches that come out, give their time, um, to help develop these young people and mentor them on and off the field. And again, we just want to say thank you. And there's another special group that I'd like for them to stand up. These are our coaches, uh, of our travel teams. For our senior team, it's Al Freyas, Keith Landecker, Shay Butler, and Richard West. For our junior team, it's Glenn Swafford, Chuck Ashley, Chris Patton, and Larry Hunt. And then for our girls' team, it's Dennis Lepwich, Michelle Taylor, Kiosha Lepwich, and Denisha Lepwich. And before all the, uh, go ahead and all the kids stand. And one last person, I know he's going to kill me, but you have to have somebody that coordinates all these games, the officials, um, just, it would not work without him, Richard Thank you, counsel.
Okay, so it's my pleasure to present this proclamation. See all the things that because of you can happen. Thank you. Whereas the Lakeside Dixie Youth Baseball Players were the first team in Tennessee to win the Dixie Youth Baseball World Series, and whereas Lakeside Dixie Youth Baseball laid the groundwork for integrated sports teams in Chattanooga, and whereas the members of Lakeside Dixie Youth Baseball have made significant contributions over the years, not only in sports, but toward the community as a whole, now therefore, I, Andy Burke, Mayor of the City of Chattanooga, do hereby proclaim, July ninth, twenty-nineteen, as Lakeside Dixie Youth Baseball Day. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Y'all can go.
I'd like to say thank you again to the mayor and thank you to the council. This is our trophy, our World Series trophy, so we're going to go ahead and leave, let you take care of whatever you want to.
Okay. Yeah, we can do it. It's yours.
Yeah, Councilwoman Burrs, Councilwoman Burrs, Councilman Gilbert would like to say something.
Well, I just want to say, um, gentlemen, uh, some of your teammates are new, like Mr. Greer and, and Mr. Fowell and that player on our team, um, you did a great job, and your ability to do what you did did not go in vain. You have a lot of kids, for example, Butch, stand up. That young man, based on what y'all have done for Lakeside, he has sent so many kids to college to go to school for free rides because of him tra- training them at Lakeside. So I want to let you know that that young man has done a lot for Lakeside youth and fam- youth development. So I do appreciate everything you do. Um, it seems like it's not been that long ago. We're getting old, but I really appreciate everything you do. And, uh, Lakeside carry on, remember Terry Lee, you know, Terry Lee always mentioned you about developing that field. He always mentioned about how you developed and how they got together, like you said, in Harrison and, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Great presentation. Yeah, uh, sure, please, all the RBI kids, would you please go out front and take a picture with these legendary gentlemen? Okay, Madam Clerk, let's proceed to ordinances on final reading, six A, please.
An ordinance to Menchandug City Code, Part Two, Chapter Twenty-Four, Article Fifteen, Section Twenty-Four, Five-Eleven, to establish a moratorium relating to the operation of dockless electric scooters and bicycles.
We have Councilman Smith, followed by Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move approval.
It's been moving properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor, by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Pose his name. Motion carries. Now, Madam Clerk, we'll proceed to ordinances on first reading, six A, please.
An ordinance to Menchandug City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-Eight, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone properties located at three oh nine and three thirteen Tremont Street. More particularly described here in from R-one residential zone and E-R-M-three to E-R-A-two, urban edge residential attached two stories maximum height zone, and E-R-M-three urban edge residential multi-unit, three stories maximum height zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant and the city are still trying to work some things out, and I've been asked for a two-week deferral, but I just wanted to see if there's opposition in the audience tonight.
Two, four, or six?
I don't want you all to give up on anything. We're working very, very hard to try to reach some compromises on this and hopefully deal with issues like density and, and things like that on it. So, but with that, I'm going to move for a two-week deferral.
Okay, it's been moving properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor, by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Pose his name. Motion carries. Item B, please, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to Menchandug City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-Eight, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone properties in the fifty-one-hundred block of Highway Fifty-Eight. More particularly described here in from R-one residential zone and R-two residential zone to R-four special zone.
Councilman Smith, followed by Councilman Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just out of curiosity, I would also like to ask the same question. Is, is there any opposition here this evening to this case? Okay, I thought I, I was hoping I'd communicated this well. Uh, Mr. Chair, we did have discussions over this, um, and spoke to the applicant, and I would like to move for a deferral until August thirteenth, please.
Okay, till August thirteenth. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor, by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Pose his name. Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. C, please.
An ordinance to Menchandug City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-Eight, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone part of an unaddressed property located in the eighty-two-hundred block of Apes and Pike. More particularly described here in from R-one residential zone to C-two convenience commercial zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Gilbert. Okay, okay, Councilman Ledford, just as I thought.
Thank you. It's okay. John, can you read the conditions for me real quick?
Just one minute, please. Oh, six, five, here we go. Uh, no vehicular repair facilities, new and used dealerships and repair facilities, automobile record services, outdoor storage, mini warehouses, wholesale, and accessory warehouses, and all premises signs shall be permitted. Trees are placed along the front street yard to match surrounding area per seat-out review and approval, and the last one is rear pedestrian access be granted to the adjoining property owner.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. I move to approve.
It's been moving properly seconded by Councilman Smith. Any questions? All in favor, by the sign of aye?
Chair.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
Sorry, Mike Price, MAP Engineers representing the applicant. We would ask that that third condition be removed that's on there, as far as granting the rear access. We're fine with the other conditions.
John, can you read me those conditions?
Sure. That third condition, just one second, please. Rear pedestrian access be granted to the adjoining property owner.
Can we get one more time?
Rear pedestrian access be granted to the adjoining property owner.
Pedestrian access, okay.
Uh, yes, sir, it is on.
There you go. Um, John, can you explain to me where that condition originated from?
Probably the original case is probably carrying the same conditions that were on the front properties, is my understanding.
It came out of Planning Commission, is where that came out of.
Okay, I just, I recall that there was also another property not cl- far away that was rezoned that way. I, I'm not aware of staff having a particular issue or actually making that recommendation as part of our original report. In fact...
Okay, that's what, I'm glad you said that. That's what's throwing me with the recommendation from staff.
Actually, looking at staff recommendation, did not include that condition.
Did not include that. All right, I'm going to, uh, like to make that motion to remove the third condition.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Smith to remove that third position, that third, uh, condition.
And then I'd like to move to approval on the amended version.
Okay, it's been moving properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor, by the sign of aye? Pose his name. Motion carries. Okay. It's been moving properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor, by the sign of aye? Pose his name. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to Menchandug City Code, Part Two, Chapter Thirty-Eight, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at fifty-six thirteen Clark Road. More particularly described here in from R-one residential zone to C-two convenience commercial zone and R-three residential zone, subject to certain conditions.
Councilwoman Burrs.
The applicant is here. Is there any opposition? Okay, um, what I would like to do is read the conditions, and then opposition, if you would, let's have a full presentation.
Okay. Please read, John.
Sure. Uh, the conditions is currently recommended by Planning Commission, there are six of them. Um, so the, um, first condition is a minimum of twenty-foot type A landscape buffer shall be installed and maintained along the outer boundary of the R-three zone property, including Clark Road, except Highway Fifty-Eight, we shall have an eight-foot wide standard street yard, street plantings. Number two, a five-foot tall vinyl coated chain link fence shall be installed along the exterior boundary of the apartment development. Three, all buildings shall be set back a minimum of fifty feet from all exterior boundaries which adjoin residential properties. Four, compactor and/or dumpsters shall be located no closer than one hundred feet to any adjoining residentially zoned properties. Garbage pickup shall be limited to occur only between the hours of eight AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday. Five, two vehicular entrances shall be provided for the R-three development and two entrances shall be provided for the C-two property, as generally depicted on the applicant's site plan. And six, pedestrian connectivity pathway to be provided between the R-three and C-two properties.
Thank you. And, um, those of you, the presentation was made to a very large meeting at the community. Does, do my colleagues wish a full presentation by John, or shall we hear from the people that are opposed?
Yes, let's, let's hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mike Price, MAP Engineers. So the proposal is for a high-end development...
Excuse me, Mike, uh, would you please read the rules?
For zoning ordinances, the following rules shall be followed. The case shall be presented by a member of the staff of the Office of Planning and Development. The applicant shall be granted... A seven minutes for oral presentation, plus two minutes for rebuttal, for a total of nine minutes. Spoke persons for the opposition shall be granted equal time of nine minutes. Discussion between council members shall not be interrupted by either the applicants or the opponents, or by any other member of the public present in the council chamber. The chairperson shall strictly enforce these rules.
Thank you very much. All right, Mike, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, the development here is a high-end development at the intersection of Clark Road and Highway Fifty-Eight, and the, um, developer did have a community meeting. Uh, we met with the community, we went over the plan and showed the, uh, fact that there is a high demand as it relates to housing in this particular area, uh, just due to its location and proximity to Volkswagen and then out to the, uh, I-seventy-five once Volkswagen Drive is completed. Uh, there was a lot of discussion, it basically centered on the traffic signal, uh, and when it would be turned on. And certainly, we, uh, look forward to the time that that traffic signal is on, and we think it would be turned on, uh, prior to the time that this development would be open. Uh, we did look at basically pushing the development, if you will, more towards the center. We agreed to do a, and proposed, a twenty-foot landscape buffer around the perimeter as it relates to the R-three property, uh, both along Clark Road, as John mentioned, as well as on the north and west sides. A ten-foot buffer, it's all that's required, but we're doubling that. Uh, we also, um, in terms of where we place the clubhouse and pool, was to center that out towards Highway Fifty-Eight and away from Clark Road, uh, as we felt that that would be important as it relates to what one would visually see coming down Clark Road. The, uh, corner is proposed for a convenience store, and, um, we think that that is a appropriate use for that corner, given the amount of traffic that is currently there and will be there once Volkswagen Drive is open. Uh, staff did support the, uh, proposal, uh, and with that, if I would, I ask that I reserve any remaining time to, uh, discuss any other points after opposition has spoken. Thank you.
Thank you. Opposition, you have nine minutes.
City Council, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you today. Uh, I speak on behalf, not just of the few people that you see here, but over a hundred and sixty residents of the Clark Road and adjoining subdivisions that...
Yes, ma'am.
One of the problems we had at the meeting was that we had a room full of people, except none of them lived in the city. So I welcome this, because, please tell us whether or not you live in the city.
I do not live in the city.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, forgive me for interrupting you.
And, and most of the people on this list do not live in the city.
Okay.
So there's a very narrow corridor right there, and everything that adjoins it, all the residential divisions are, um, are single-family homes on large lots, generally in excess of an acre.
It was my understanding, if I may, Mr. Chair, that the land itself is in the city, but the...
Part of it.
Yeah, and that that's why it came into the city for consideration, but the people who have a lot of energy about it live in the county.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure, I'm, uh, I, I think I saw your hand waving. You'll get a chance to talk, okay.
So I don't want to take a lot of time. I did send all of you earlier today an email. I hope you have had an opportunity to read that, which outlines the key points that I object to this, and basically it's a lack of infrastructure to support this, and, um, and it's totally inconsistent with the neighborhood that exists out there now. I will, uh, take my turn and let others speak.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, um, for the opportunity. Um, I am also not a resident, however, I am a member of Harrison United Methodist Church, which is part of the annex, um, parcels that is in the city. And I also have a petition. I sent emails with a copy of that petition from the church members, asking you to deny this rezoning, um, not only for, um, how it would affect the aesthetics of the nick, adjoining neighborhoods, but also safety. The current, um, road in front of the church entranceway is now part of the turn lane. There is not a way to go north and pull into our parking lot, and we have one way in and out, and we have a lot of elderly people, and I can just see that it is not going to be a very safe thing, even if you turn on the traffic light, it is not going to change that because of the design. The other thing is the need for a convenience store. My understanding, most likely, it will sell alcohol. In order for alcohol license to be allowed, my understanding, it ha- it cannot be within two thousand feet of a church or school. I believe Harrison United Methodist Church will be a lot less than two thousand feet. So that is another consideration for that C-two property. Um, so I just ask that you deny this zoning. Thank you.
I'm a resident of the county also. We have lived out there for two years, and we moved out there because of the lot size, because of the quietness, and had no idea that that little piece of property would turn into something like this. There is no size guaranteeing the playground. Where is a playground even on there? The three-bedroom homes, I would assume, would be people with children, small children, and the children would have nowhere to play, from what I can see, except in Highway Fifty-Eight. And I would hope that for the safety and the well-being of the neighborhood, that you would deny this. Thank you.
I too am a resident of the county, and I'm opposed to this, but I don't understand, it looks to me like you're trying to use the city-county as a barrier to pull your side the way you want it. I don't care if you live in the city or county. If you live in a house in that area, you've got to put up with the neighbors, whether they live in the city or county either. So it's still a, a problem. First of all, two-hundred-and-thirty-four units, probably an average of three people, maybe four, living in two-hundred-and-thirty-four units, that could be up to six-hundred, seven-hundred people in that one fourteen-acre tract. I developed a piece of property, fifteen acres, and could only get twenty homesites in it, in Hamilton County, and caused a no sewer, but I noticed, as soon as they applied for this, they went and laid all the sewer pipe out on Ferdinand and Peach Road going up to Volkswagen, so li- like it's a done deal. At some point, you've got to listen to the residents in that area, and it makes a difference. I know you look at increased taxes coming into the city for this, which is a good thing for the city, but it's not good for residents. You don't live in that area, you don't live next to it, so you don't oppose it. But all of us do. We bought our homes, I'm retired, and I bought my home out there. I'm a fire cancer patient along with my wife, and we wanted a quiet place to be with, with a little bit of a yard, you know, and, and a buffer away from people. That's what we bought, and now you're going to turn it into like being downtown in the middle of the city. I know you don't look at it that way, because it's one piece of property, but I look at it that way, when you're talking about five, six, seven-hundred people, and a convenience store. There's, if you drive up and down Fifty-Eight, within, if you go two miles above, two miles below, I haven't counted them, but I guarantee you, there's twenty-five convenience stores and gas stations. Why do we need another one? And the park being open on Clark Road, if that was closed off, would be even better. But the other thing is safety. I personally know of a couple, elderly couple, that were killed at Hickory Valley Road because of wrecks. I'd like for y'all to go back and look at the number of wrecks and the fatalities at Hickory Valley Road and Ferdinand and Peach Road. There's wrecks there every two or three days, there's at least one or two. And you add six, seven-hundred more people there without changing anything but turning a red light on, if they turn it on, he said they may turn it on, he expects them to turn it on. He didn't say anything definite would happen. He just speculated on a lot of stuff, and I think you need to look at that. It needs some assurance that things are going to happen to keep it safe and keep it protected and keep the people in that area in a quiet place that they bought. That's what we bought, and we pay our taxes for. To me, it lowers your taxes, uh, your value on your property if I want to sell, and if that's true, then everybody in that area's taxes should go down. That's just my opinion.
Thank you so much for sharing what we've been dealing with there. Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm Mark Henson, I live on Clark Road. Um, just some of the things that have gone over already. Yeah, within five and a half miles of this piece of property, there's already nine convenience stores in five and a half miles. Within two and a half miles of this one, there's already three, the council okayed one, another one last year at, on up Highway Fifty-Eight, so that will make five within two and a half miles. I don't think we need any more convenience stores on Highway Fifty-Eight. As far as the zoning, or the, um, annexation, the city annexed the first piece of property on each side of Highway Fifty-Eight. on each side of Highway 58, which is all commercial, so there's not any residential involved in this city, so you're our representation. Let's see, we're talking about the church. Harrison Methodist Church is basically 400 feet from this proposed convenience store. Cornerstone Baptist Church is 2,100 feet. The current Harrison Elementary is 700 feet. The new Harrison Elementary is probably 1,000 to 1,500 feet. Brown Middle School is 1,300. Central High School is 2,000, and Harrison Baptist Church is around 2,300. This is Russ Festments from Hamilton County GIS. The turn lane at Clark Road will only hold about seven, maybe eight cars. With people coming in and out of both of the apartments, the residential, and the convenience store, you're going to have more than seven cars at that red light, which is going to put stopped traffic in the fast lane of Highway 58. And I really don't want to see that. Mike's talked about the red light, we don't know for sure they'll turn it on. The road into Volkswagen is not even nearly completed. It stops at Gestomp, which is one of the suppliers, and they see no reason to, to continue and take it on through past Volkswagen. Thank you for your time. If you have any more questions, I've got some more information, but thank you, Council.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mike, do you want to respond about the alcohol, which is, seems to be an issue, and anything else that was brought up?
Yes, ma'am. So, just for a couple of items. The plan that you see before you, in terms of the traffic layout, does meet TDOT standards. We actually, there is a new manual that came out within about the last year and a half as it relates to driveway placement, and this meets that requirement as it relates to spacing away from the intersections, and we also utilize an existing center turn lane that was existing there on 58. There was discussion about infrastructure. There is infrastructure supporting this particular location, both with Highway 58 and being able to provide certainly a major thoroughfare for people traveling in and out of this development, as well as water and sewer, so all infrastructure is in place and available to use here. As it relates to the appropriateness of the use of the property, I would just simply point out that if you look to the east, on the other side of Clark Road, you already have zoned that area commercial. Down the west, you have R3 and R2, which are rental properties. So I think that this does fit. There was some discussion as it relates to that somehow this is going to be almost like a bedlam as it relates to generating noise. My experience has been with many apartment developments, that their way of life won't change as it relates to any noise factors, given this particular location, and especially with how it's placed, and in relation to the distance to their property. So I don't think that I see anything that's going to create some sort of noise issues as it relates to their way of life. So, given that, again, I think that this is an appropriate location. There was, again, a lot of discussion maybe about the traffic signal. I don't control the traffic signal. If I did, I'd wave my magic wand and we'd have it up today. But I do believe that the city and the staff and the state will work together, certainly for that signal to be up and running by the time that this development and the new Harrison Elementary School is up. And so I don't really see that as an issue, but I can't promise that because I don't have that ability. And so with that, if there's any other questions, that completes what I have to say.
Thank you. It's, what is your pleasure?
Move approval.
Okay. You want to say?
I can ask Mike something.
Okay. Councilman Gilbert, it's been moving properly seconded, though, so go ahead.
Mike, and one of the things concerning was the convenience store. The last man says 400 feet. I know our ordinance, our rule is 500. Is that church 500 feet or longer? Is it, what is it?
I have not checked that, to be honest, so what I would simply say is this, if it's closer than that, they won't be selling beer then. If it's further than that, then I guess they have that right. So that's yet to be determined.
I know that part of it, but they already went further with it, but, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's been moving properly seconded. Any questions? Okay. All in favor, by the sign of aye. Pose his name. Motion carries. E, please, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to men Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as a rezone on properties located in the 7,200 Block of Bonnie Oaks Drive, more particularly described to your end from R1 residential zone to R4 special zone subject to certain conditions.
Councilwoman Burris.
Move approval.
It's been moved improperly seconded by Councilman Ledford. Any questions? All in favor, by the sign of aye. Pose his name. Motion carries. Now at this time, I would turn the chair over to Vice Chairman Henderson. Madam Clerk, would you please read F, please?
An ordinance to men Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as a rezone on property located at 3,509 Seventh Avenue, more particularly described to your end from R1 residential zone, the C2 convenience commercial zone.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Is there any opposition present? Okay. Chairman Oglesby.
Move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any questions? All those in favor, by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much.
Now G, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to men Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as a rezone on properties in the 3,700 through 3,900 blocks of St. Elmo Avenue, more particularly described to your end from C2 convenience commercial zone to UGC urban general commercial zone subject to certain conditions.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Any opposition present? Okay. Councilman, what's your pleasure? You'd like to have a presentation?
Yeah, presentation, please.
All right. John?
Is the St. Elmo case correct? Give me one quick second. This is a request to rezone several properties in the St. Elmo Town Center, from C2 convenience commercial to UGC general commercial zone for a redevelopment project. These properties are, again, located in the 3,700 block, the 3,800 block, and 3,900 blocks of St. Elmo Avenue. Zooming in, you can see, again, how I yellowed the three properties in question, there are three blocks. One has, is mostly built out, the other parcel has, currently has parking between, before you get to a, be a rock climbing center, and then you have a third tract of land to the north, which is, has a parking lot partially vacant, but also a commercial structure. So they're wanting to rezone those three to UGC for an urban redevelopment project. Here again's a view looking up toward the mountain at the, at the, at the location. Here are some images showing you the sites in question. I do think one important piece to note, there is one property that has a billboard sign on it currently, in the parking lot, which does create some challenges. The applicant may speak to that, and that came up during planning commission. Again, you here see the zoning map. Currently, the properties are zoned C2. You do have, there was a case rezoning to UGC not far from this property, off of Old Mountain Road, for a mixed development that featured mainly apartments with some shop front retail on the ground floor. You see it located to the left of your screen there. Other than that one property I just mentioned, there hasn't been other UGC requests in this location in terms of history. Definitely, the C2 designation is not consistent with the existing development form or the planned vision for this location. UGC is probably the closest zone we have that would promote an urban development form in terms of promoting buildings close to the street, parking to the rear. It does have some limits in terms of, you know, scale, up to four stories, and, and generally without, you're limited, your building footprint to 12,000 square feet unless you get an exception approved by planning commission. And they did get an exception approved by planning commission as part of this request, for a larger building featuring the garages. Here you see the, kind of an outlay of the proposed programming by the applicant. Essentially, in the middle section there, you see some shops, I believe it would be the office or residential above that. To the right, you see, that's where they're planning, building a parking garage, which would feature some kind of commercial development on the ground floor and parking in the upper stories, then a potential shops or hotel further to the right. So quite an extensive project in the St. Elmo area. Here is a rendering showing the potential scale of those as built out. Another perspective, looking at, at the site in question. Again, you can see the parking garage is kind of that wider-looking structure in the far upper right with program buildings in between. There also would be a, the applicant is indicating a proposed pedestrian throughway to break up the masting of the building in the middle, so you have a throughway connection between St. Elmo Avenue and Tennessee Avenue. You can see that, again, they're maintaining another through-block connection at that location, and then some active storefronts along the edge of that proposed parking garage. Okay? Again, this is from a street view look, which is clearly, that's in keeping with the character of, of St. Elmo, as, that's already there, it's from the existing historic buildings. When staff reviewed this request, of course, as always, we consult the adopted plan for the area, and this will be the St. Elmo master plan, and it recommends mixed-use business, and it recommends incorporating residential to mixed-use buildings. So, again, it recommended a future redevelopment to be consistent with some of the existing built form in the St. Elmo Town Center area. So staff, in looking at the requests, definitely concurred with the use of UGC as a, a zone, but recommended several conditions to accommodate for some of the limits we've learned over the past few years in UGC. It's not a perfect zone, it has some limits. So we did recommend several conditions to ensure alignment with the planned vision for the location, so we recommended six conditions. At planning commission, there was no opposition. Planning commission, after hearing staff's report and comments from the applicant, applicant supported, of the, again, of the six conditions that staff recommended, the applicant supported two of those conditions and asked for those others to be removed. At planning commission, after hearing all that, basically concur with the applicant's recommendation, and that is to approve UGC with two conditions. One, limiting the types of auto-oriented uses, so auto owner uses, wholesaling with accessory warehousing, adult-oriented establishments, self-storage facilities, we prohibited. And two, that the existing unopened right-of-way extending between Parcels 155OE02 and 155OE01 shall be used for pedestrian connectivity between St. Elmo Avenue and Tennessee Avenue. So those are the conditions that come before the recommendation of planning commission.
All right. Would the applicant come forward, just to remind you, you have seven minutes with a two-minute rebuttal?
My name's Ben Berry with Berry Engineers. We look at this as just a great extension of the existing commercial development that it's in St. Elmo, a true mixed-use project, pedestrian-oriented. It is in line with the community plan that underwent a long neighborhood review that recommended this area to be dense commercial use. We have had a community, we held a neighborhood meeting, which was very positive, got a lot of great feedback. I've had several people call the office, and we've been able to talk through, nearly everyone I've talked to ends up being either supportive or neutral on the plan, once they understand the details that are involved. There's, you know, the, some of the, some of the desired uses, you know, commercial on the first floor, residential on top floors, there's a parking deck to accommodate all of this development, open streetscape. We just really feel that this is the right direction for this area, and UGC accomplishes that. That's the tool that we're here, we're here for the rezoning, and UGC helps us do that urban-type pedestrian development. And I'll, I know there's some opposition, so I'll just reserve the rest of my time to, to answer any questions that may come up during that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll call on you again, just a few minutes. All right, opposition, you have a total of nine minutes, if you have one spokesman, or if you have several that would like to speak, if you divide up the time equally. If you would give your name for the record, please.
Thank you. I'm Tim McDonald, and I'm not expressing opposition to the UGC zoning as such. I think it offers advantages that the C2 zoning does not actually offer. Rather, my concern lies in the potential changes in the volume and, and pattern of traffic in that area from these developments. We're dealing with very, very narrow street on St. Elmo Avenue. Traffic is very heavy now, especially during the tourist season. It is, it's pretty much a nightmare sometimes during the day, and rush hour traffic is, is incredibly heavy. I think that, that a traffic study is warranted, and I would like to see that this, either the final vote or this vote be deferred until a traffic study can either be authorized or commissioned, or make it perhaps a contingency that the zoning would be contingent on a traffic study being completed with the results available to the community, so we understand what the impact is going to be. And therefore, of course, inherent in any traffic consideration is safety, and that's my biggest concern, is the safety because of the volume and the potential changes due to the development for which this change is being requested. Thank you.
Hi, thanks for hearing me out today. I work with...
Would you give us your, would you give us your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. My name's Megan Spooner, and I'm actually a resident of North Georgia, Walker County. I commute through St. Elmo, sometimes four times a day. I work at the YMCA downtown, I worked there for 13 years. So this morning, I was working with some of the Chattanooga retiree residents, some people that have lived here their whole lives, a lot of people coming off of Lookout Mountain. They don't know about this, a lot of them, and so I told them about the height that we were looking at, and the first reaction I got was, what an eyesore, because this is the base of Lookout Mountain. Lookout Mountain, the texture and the beauty and the heart and soul of our city. And like we heard with the people out there on Highway 58, this is, this, a high-density commercial district in St. Elmo is, as far as I'm concerned, not in character at all, and we have enough of that downtown, it's not that far away. So this seems entirely inappropriate for me, especially since Mike Price put a bunch of new and high-end housing right there near the Incline Railway. I don't know if this people want 24-hour, commercial, active alleyway drinking people running through their neighborhoods. I would not. So that's just my opinion. And then, for the case of safety, you know, we already back up about three or four different, coming into this major traffic artery. We get back up on Broad Street, we get back up around the west side of Lookout Mountain, we get back up coming up from Walker County, and what people do is they get rageful, and so they drive through those neighborhoods, and they go out and they want to hit Market Street. And you've got that pedestrian right-of-way, I guess it's Virginia Avenue, that's, you know, we're touting as a safe pedestrian place, so. And the other thing that I would like to say is that another place where we've clogged up our city is over by the West Village, which is Pine Street and Chestnut Street. Three times a day, when I'm going through there, you've got delivery trucks, and we're talking UPS-sized delivery trucks, but FedEx trucks...
Ma'am, would you just keep your comments to the, the issue at hand, please?
Absolutely, but I, what I...
On the St. Elmo Avenue development.
What I anticipate is that we will have delivery trucks the size of semis stopping and delivering and bringing the food products, whatever, clogging up any time of day, this area, because we're going to be having our, you know, the restaurants that need supplies. And so I just, I strongly oppose this. I think there's something to be said about a single-story commercial district that has some character to it and is conserving some of our history and the beauty of that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, applicant, you have a two-minute rebuttal.
Just speaking to the traffic regarding the design that's proposed, we are eliminating four existing driveways that are onto Tennessee Avenue currently. Tennessee Avenue experiences the great majority of the traffic that most people are referring to as far as congestion, and this development's turning, turning that entire corridor into a pedestrian-oriented environment, eliminating that vehicular access, and using St. Elmo Avenue, which is somewhat, somewhat underutilized, especially compared to Tennessee Avenue, for its primary access for the parking garage.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Oglesby? Councilman Oglesby?
Yeah, I have been, been attending these meetings, and I've gotten the emails, and it's really, you know, a mix, mixed opinions of what should be done, moved forward, but as a consensus, this is something that, number one, it'll take it from commercial to UGC, which this community has fought very hard to get to that point. And this project has a lot of potential in bringing a lot of pedestrian-friendly activities there. And some of the things I heard at the meeting was how it can, it can help with retail and small business development in this area. And there has been a lot of excitement on both sides. But before I render my decision, I just want to thank everybody who came out to voice their opinion on this project, whether you was for or against it, but I think history would tell us that this has the potential to do great things for St. Elmo and the surrounding areas. So with that being said, I move to approve.
Councilman Mitchell?
Well, I, I think I'll yield until he gets a second.
Second.
Okay.
Now I'll go.
All right, we've, we have a motion to approve with a proper second.
All right.
Questions?
John Bridger.
Ben, could you come up here also? Will you go back to the staff's recommendations?
Yes, sir.
The six-
All right, one second. Let me get there real quick.
It's disappeared.
No, it's here, I gotta get to it.
I believe, Mr. Bridger, you were saying building frontage?
Yeah, I would, I would say of the, of the six that I felt, you know, something you should give strong consideration to is the minimum building frontage, which is condition number two. Now, that's consistent with Form-based Code, just ensuring that you have adequate building frontage along the street, because UGC does not have a minimum building frontage requirement. I think that would be the one that I would say that stands out to me, that's something to think about before you take action. Is that, that's basically, I think, the same question you had at committee meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm gonna ask, just ask Ben. Ben, why, why, why did you not want to accept that condition?
So can you go to the site plan? And this is actually one of the questions that, that I've gotten that once, once I've talked to, in fact, I had a gentleman today ask me about this condition. Once we talked about it, he felt comfortable accepting it as it is. So one of the unique, so in order for it to be building frontage, I believe it has, the building has to be within 10 feet of the, the right-of-way line. The, the challenging spot is the old SunTrust site. You have the curvature of the road, so matching a building to the curvature of the road can be difficult. We also have an underground stream in a culvert that's 20 feet deep. That's, everyone has mentioned to me, the, the SunTrust sinkhole. What it, what that really was, was it was a failure in that pipe that collapsed and eroded, so we're gonna have to replace that culvert, and in order to do so, we are extending the culvert between the building that says Hotel Shops Hotel and Shops. So there's a pedestrian corridor in there that's brown. That's where the culvert is going, and that's gonna be a, a large pedestrian corridor. So if you see the, the frontage along Tennessee Avenue for that particular parcel, it is proposed to be less than 70%, but the balance that's not occupied by building is purely pedestrian-oriented, and it's, it's really, it's because of the culvert replacement and the curvature of the road.
Okay.
The, the second option, the second obstacle to that is the billboard that was mentioned. That's an unresolved issue. It is the last phase of the project, so this is a project that's gonna last many years. Phase one is the SunTrust parcel, and then it's going to move towards 1885. There's a billboard located right behind 1885 that we have to come up with a plan, and that may limit the amount of building frontage that we can occupy on that parcel.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any more questions?
Yep.
Okay. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With, with that last line of questionings, what was just motioned and approved? Did it include the condition requiring the 70%? And if so, it was, okay, I just-
It's the planning version, which is-
I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was understood, that after that question, that what is being moved and approved does not require that 70% frontage, so it matches the site plan that was presented. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Councilman, just for clarification, which, which one are you approving or motioning to approve?
The planning version.
Okay. So this is a motion to approve the planning version.
Yes, it is.
Correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay. I see no more lights, are we ready to vote? All in favor with a sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay? At this time, I will turn the chair back over to Chairman Oglesby.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Madam Clerk, H. please.
In order to submit Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance, so as to rezoned property located at 1505 East 14th Street, and more particularly described here in from R1 Residential Zone to RTZ Residential Townhouse, zero lot lines on subject to certain conditions.
Councilman Byrd?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Checking to see, is the applicant here? Yes, okay, and do we have any opposition to this? Opposition? And I haven't received any opposition as well. Could you read the conditions to me?
Yes, sir. And I got one, I'll take actions, I have one just clarification for an applicant on a prior case, but we'll do that after we're done with this case.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I would be happy to do that. Give me one second. Subject to three conditions: single-family detached residential only, vehicular access and parking shall be from the rear alley, and subdivision into no more than two residential lots.
Thank you, sir. With that, move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Motion carries. Aye, please.
In order to submit Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance, Articles Two and Five, Sections 38-2, 38-1, 8317, 38-305, 38-306, 38-323, 5, 38-333, 7, and 38-34110 relating to outdoor storage and mini warehouses.
Councilman Gilbert, followed by Councilman Ledford.
I'd defer this for two weeks till July the 23rd.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded to defer. All in favor by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Motion carries. Next, please.
In order to submit Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance, Article Five zoning regulations, Division 28, A1 Urban Agricultural Zone, Section 38-453, permitted uses and adding new Section 38-460 regarding applicability.
If, if maybe, please, I have one just items to clarify for an applicant on a prior case, I hate to, just to be sure, we took action, it's my understanding that we took action on Agenda Item 6E, 2019-07, to believe Councilman Byrd's recommended approval of the planning, that was the one for the hospice? I just want to confirm for the record. I'm sorry. Sorry, thank you for your indulgence.
Okay, Councilman Mitchell?
Mr. Chair, I was actually just trying to get John on stage, he was-
Oh, you're okay, okay, good. You're okay, I'm okay, we're okay. All right, Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to move for approval. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Councilman Henderson, I mean Chair, hit your button again, sir, got you out of there. Okay, Vice Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to amend this ordinance to say, no pasture area shall be closer than 150 feet of any residential structure excluding the shared property line where the adjacent property already maintains livestock.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries.
Councilman for a clarification? This-
What now?
Does that apply throughout the ordinance? I know there's several places in the ord, I just make sure you're correct, attorney, that there are, is that throughout, because there's several sections where that applies? I just want to be sure we're clear about that.
As I understand it, yes, it applies to all the sections.
Okay.
As I understand the amended-
Hit your button, hit your button again, that's all. One more time. There you go.
As I understand it, yes, it applies. My microphone's not working, or I'm not using it correctly. It's got raised.
It's got raised, yeah.
Is the button on, is it red?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Councilman Henderson, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move as amended.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Ledford. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Motion carries. Councilman Gilbert, you want anything?
Yeah, just ask John. John, on aye, will you have information to us, hopefully in a week, after revise?
Yes, my goal would be to, if, if it pleases the council, at our Planning and Zoning Committee, we have one next Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, and at that meeting, we give an overview. As I understand the specific question deal, I heard one point is, it kind of shows some existing sites, so how does this, what are, what, how does the current standards and process work for an existing site, so we can see what that would mean, and then show with the new standard what that would mean? So, because I understand your concern was, is it maybe being too permissive to allow a smaller buffer yard than is now required? That's my understanding of your concern.
Okay. You good, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, if that is it, we'll now move on to Resolutions. Seven A, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an assignment and assumption of license agreement with River City Ducks LLC as amended to 4J's Ducks LLC for access to Ross's Landing Ramp to provide access to the Tennessee River for the operation of the Chattanooga Ducks Amphibious Landing Watercraft Vehicle, with the term expiring May 1, 2020, with one remaining option to renew for an additional term of one year.
Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Chairman, this is in your district, and if it's all right with you, I'll move for approval.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Thank you, gentlemen. Questions? All in favor by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Motion carries. B, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Economic and Community Development to accept a grant from the Lynn Hurst Foundation to support public art projects in the East Lake and Martin Luther King Neighborhoods in the amount of $140,000.
Councilman Byrd?
Move to approve.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Ledford. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Motion carries. C, please.
A resolution authorizing acceptance of $267,852.22 from Hamilton County as proceeds from the 2019 real property back tax sale, with $258,344.93 being applied as the city's portion, $3,092.35 being applied to city attorney's fees, and $6,414.94 being applied to city treasurer costs.
Councilman Ledford?
Approve, sir.
Okay. It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Byrd. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. D, please.
A resolution authorizing Collins and Company to pay an on-the-job injury settlement to city employee James Richard for a permanent partial impairment rating in accordance with the city's injury-on-duty policy in the amount of $28,988.76.
Councilman Gilbert?
Move to approve.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Byrd. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. E, please.
A resolution to confirm the mayor's appointment of Zack Green to the Stadium Corporation
Councilwoman Byrd, followed by Councilman Mitchell.
Moving through, second.
Moved and properly seconded by Councilman Mitchell. Questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. F, please.
A resolution authorizing the chief of the Chattanooga Police Department to enter into a one-year blanket agreement with Lyca Geo Systems Inc. to provide service repairs, updates, and warranty service for police scan station equipment beginning May 25, 2019 through May 24, 2020, with two optional annual renewals and an annual spending limit not to exceed $40,000.
Council, what is your pleasure? It's been moved by Councilman Smith and seconded properly. Questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. G, please.
A resolution authorizing approval of change order number three for CDM Smith Inc. relative to contract number W15009101 MBW WTP Control Room upgrades for an increased amount of $26,595 for revised contract amount of $429,440.
Councilman, Vice Chair Henderson?
Move for approval.
Second. Been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Smith. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. H, please.
A resolution adopting an interlocal agreement with Hamilton County and the WWTA to study feasible connection methods in providing consolidated wastewater services to all city and county residents who are provided wastewater services within the service area of the Wastewater Treatment Authority, WWTA, and the Chattanooga Wastewater System.
Councilwoman Byrd?
Through, through.
Been moved and properly seconded. Questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Okay. Motion carries. Aye, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation, TDOT, for the maintenance of state highways within the city limits of Chattanooga, reimbursement to the city for an amount not to exceed $426,177.30.
What's your pleasure, Council? It's been moved and properly seconded. Questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. J, please.
A resolution authorizing payment to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, in accordance with Section 1048A of the Consent Decree for sanitary sewer overflows incurred during the period of January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018, in the amount of $188,000.
Councilman Ledford, followed by Councilman Gilbert?
Thank you, Chairman, move to approve.
Been moved and properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. K, please.
A resolution authorizing approval of change order number two for Clean Coal Construction relative to contract number T17006201, community development block grant sidewalk install repair for an increased amount of $5,562 for a revised contract amount not to exceed
Councilman Mitchell?
Your district, Mr. Chair, I move approval.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. L, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into an agreement with Coal and Associates Inc. for professional services associated with ADA Transition Plan, T18011101, in the amount of $580,769, with a contingency amount of $58,076.90 for a total amount of $638,845.90.
We have Councilman Mitchell, followed by Councilman Ledford.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Poses nay? Motion carries. Tonight, we have no purchases, so we'll move on to other business. Nine A, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter into a public-private partnership agreement with Hawthorne and Mountain Creek Apartments LLC Hawthorne to accept a donation from Hawthorne in the amount of $32,283.35, and to enter into a public-private partnership agreement with Waterways, formerly Caribbean Sea-Tennessee Waterways, and to accept a donation from Waterways in the amount of $10,000, both of which will help fund the construction of a stream bank stabilization project within the Spring Valley neighborhood. the Spring Valley Neighborhood located within the Mountain Creek watershed, with the city portion in the amount of $32,616.65 for a total project cost of $75,000.
Council, Vice Chair Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded by Councilman Ledford. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Pose his name. Motion carries. If there's something else you want to say? Okay, other business. Vice Chairman Henderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been weeks now that I've been mulling over and contemplating a nomination for the Police Oversight Board. And you know, one of the things that makes this council unique, in my opinion, is our different views and ideas that we have. And while there may be some questions about this nomination that I'm bringing forward, I feel like, I feel like for me or for District One, it's the, it's the right nomination. It was recommended by some in the community to me as well. So at this time, I would like to nominate Rick Mancy Sr. to the Police Oversight Board.
Okay, Councilman Gilbert.
I probably would say I'd be against this because their intent, my belief with the intent was not to hire, have any police or retired policeman on this board. And some of the, at least one I know of, have concerns about being not, behaving not to say the things they want to say if a person is from the force itself. So I will be saying no.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Okay, it's been properly seconded by Councilman Ledford. Any questions? All in favor by the sign of aye? Pose his name. Okay. Motion carries. Is there any other business this council would like to share before I share mine? Well, I have two announcements I'd like to make. On July 20th, oh, go ahead. No. No light. Okay, on July 20th, in the South Side Community Park, there will be a movie night, and it will feature the latest Spider-Man movie. So it's, it's going to be very exciting. The fun begins at 7:00 PM. The movie will start about 8:30. There'll be free ice cream, popcorn. There'll be a touch of truck, and Tennessee American Water will be providing some really nice sprinklers. So, and that's not age-specific, but we do require shorts and t-shirts, okay? And that's going to be July the 20th. Also, not quick like the kids. There's going to be Rock the Block. It's going to be August the 4th. It's going to be at Miller Park, and it will be 1:50 to 4:50. There'll be free backpacks, hearing and eye exam, blood pressure monitoring, free uniforms, haircuts and hairstyle, food and games, and free giveaways. Volunteers needed and seeking sponsorship. So it's been an extremely successful event. So mark your calendars, and if you have donations, you would like to participate, I'd be happy to get you that number. But it's Rock the Block, August the 4th, from 1:50 to 4:50 at Miller Park. Thank you. That's, that's all I have, counsel. Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you. Mr. Green, I apologize that I gave you the incorrect information because you wanted to be on the Police Oversight Board, and I did not place you on that board because I was under the impression that ex-officers could not serve on this board. So I was misled or misinformed. So now that we are placing ex-officers on the board, if you would like for your resume to be considered, because there's other people that haven't made an appointment yet, and your name can be placed in the board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's it? Okay, is it a motion? Or you wanted to receive his resume first? What's your pleasure? Oh, okay. Oh, she's off somebody else's one. Okay, I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, well, actually, you can get it right. We'll be through shortly, and we'll be happy to answer it after that, Mr. Green. Let, let's, let's talk about that after the meeting, okay? Thank you, Mr. Green. Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted, again, to thank Dr. Bird for giving us the proclamation with the Dixie Youth Baseball Program. I found that very inspiring, and I found that it was a great way for us to celebrate what we have in common, and the absolute benefits of, of, of sports and teamwork. And I hope that we take that lesson, and we, we look at what was accomplished in 1969, and, which was before I was here, literally. And, and then I look out in the audience, and I see all those uniforms, and I see teamwork. And I just want you to let know I'm jazzed up, and I'm really excited that you brought that forward to us, and I thank you.
Great. Yeah, it was an experience. Okay, now we'll move on to committee reports. Councilwoman Bird. Councilman Bird.
Thank you. Today, we had a report from ECD, well, part of ECD, with City of Chattanooga Workforce Development. One of their statements were, were being that we'll help you with every step of your employment journey. So knowing that, we ask, and I ask everyone to please reach out to the City Chattanooga Workforce Development. If you're looking for a job, or you have a friend or a family member that's looking for a job, you can call them at 423-643-7350. That's 423-643-7350. Please reach out to them and get your family, your friends, or yourself a job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you, Chair. In the previous meeting today that I asked that we reschedule Officer Family Empowerment with YFD to come present for next week, but I'll need that scheduled for two weeks out.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Will. We'll make that happen. Councilman Gilbert. Vice Chairman Henderson. Councilman Ledford. Councilman Jerry Mitchell.
Thank you, sir. We had a Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting today. We'll have another one in two weeks following the end session. Or, you can family development. We want to let her go first this time.
Okay, yeah, that's a thank you. That's very gracious. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we did have a Public Safety Committee. We heard from Camilla Bibley, the Director of Hamilton County Coalition, as well as Vanessa Spotts, the Regional Overdose Specialist at the Hamilton County Coalition. And they came to the council and briefed us on the OIBOID epidemic here that we're facing locally in Hamilton County and in Chattanooga. No further report.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Okay, now comes the time for recognitions of persons wishing to address the council on non-agenda items. Madam City Attorney.
Coming on now?
Yes.
These are the rules for public comment. Each speaker wishing to address the council shall be recognized only at the microphone, provided for that purpose. No person shall have more than three minutes to speak. The speaker may address the council only upon matters within the legislative and quasi-judicial authority of the council. The speaker shall not be permitted to use any vulgar or obscene language, nor use the floor to personally attack or personally denigrate others. The chairperson shall not recognize any person, neighborhood association, or organization to speak to the council during the non-agenda matters portion of the agenda more than twice in any 30-day period. Persons wishing to address the council may do so only once during a council day, either at the agenda session, at a committee meeting, or at the council business meeting.
Thank you. Today, we are unable to speak is Ms. Blake Wright and Maria Mott. So if you state your name, please proceed.
My name is Tiffany Howard. I've come to address the Chattanooga City Council today on an update from my previous trip in December of 2018. And it's taken me so long to come back because the incident on October the 14th, in which city officials refused me medical care when I called 911 assistance, which resulted in multiple entries sustained by them, has taken normality from me. Simple things we often do automatically I find difficult, like leaving the house for days on end and other personal tasks, too embarrassing to mention. My dreams are haunted by repeated nightmares of being chased, hunted, taken away, and beaten. With an already very limited income, I'm strapped with more medical bills, seeing new doctors and specialists, and getting therapy for my body and mind. Although my hand, broken rib, and cuts are healing, when I look at the permanent scars, they are permanent reminders of what happened to me that day, and it refreshes the pain in my mind. And I want to move forward, but I want to say that it's so difficult for me to stand here before you again and continue to talk about this, because Chattanooga is the place where it happened, and I fear retaliation for coming here. But I know this constant pain for me won't end, and my life won't be restored until a full investigation with the county is complete, and these officers and one, two paramedics are reprimanded, and you implement a system that will not allow this to happen to the citizens of Chattanooga or tourists like myself, who simply come here to enjoy your unique history and enrich your economy with our patronage. I sincerely want to forget these memories, but I'm not allowed to, because the investigations are not complete. Nothing has been done yet to ensure another citizen won't be hurt, or another officer won't be put in harm's way by inept officers, and either possibly end up dead as a result. As taxpayers, you should be furious that money and city resources allocated for you for your protection has been abused this way, and you are, and are being taken from your school systems and your economic development initiatives that could bring jobs and make life better here for everyone. In our little town of Conyers, Georgia, where I'm from, we host billions of dollars in film production projects from around the world. Our school system is debt-free. We held a million-dollar surplus during the economic crisis in 2008, and we have an exceptional police force that is so trustworthy that our police chief wrote himself a ticket. Some may laugh, but he gets my utmost respect. And he further solidifies the fact that when officers take the oath, they put their lives on the line to protect us. May I please finish?
Thank you, Chair.
To protect us. They believe that no one is above the law, including themselves, and that is what makes them worthy of the power and the honor of the badge. I pray this council, your police chief, your mayor, your governor, your people, will not stand by and have your revenue squandered, your reputation tarnished, and your citizens harmed by the deliberate insubordination, indiscipline, and defiance of these officers and one, and two paramedics. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, hold on one second, please. Okay. Councilwoman Coonrod, then Councilman Bird. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Ma'am.
Oh, excuse me?
Yes, ma'am. Now, did this occur with the city police department or the sheriff department with the county side?
I just left from Lieutenant Toby Hewitt's office, and it was, you know, I'm not from here. So it was explained to me, and we resaw, that there were two paramedics that were, they're county employees. How, and then there were, there were other police officers that were on the scene, that are from the city. But the situation is, is that you've got to review the police reports. The police reports are not accurate. And I was taken into custody and put into the back of the car with my purse. And if I was such a harm, I called 911 for help. I have a disability, and I, and I've been hospitalized seven times since March. My frequency is to go to the hospital. Why would officers put me in the back of a car with my, with my purse if I was such a harm to them and to myself and to others? I could have, I could have taken out a weapon. And then I'm concerned about the fact that they're saying that there was a call made that said that I was sick and out of my mind, and classified this as a mental health incident, when it, when, in, in actuality, it was not. Where is the call? When I've received open records, and there's only two 911 calls that I've received, and they were both made by myself. So there's some concerning elements here that, you know, I, I just need help. And it's, it's not just the city now. It's the, they're advising me to talk to the county, and also to the paramedics and Erlanger. So it's getting a lot bigger. And, I mean, you, look at the development that you all are doing. You're planning for people like me to come here and patronize you. And unfortunately, I can't do that while it's, it's in this state.
Right. Ma'am, I apologize that that happened to you. I'm not an attorney, in no way, but as a citizen and representative, a city council representative, that I in no way expect anybody to treat our visitors that come to Chattanooga wrongly. And if you feel in any way that you've been wronged, you've been injured, then you need to sue the City of Chattanooga. You need to obtain you an attorney, and you need to follow the process. If it's still under investigation, there's nothing much that we can do under investigation until they finalize the report. But with you coming to address us, it won't push the, push it to be heard any faster. So I'm advising you, as just, you know, a representative on the council, get you an attorney, and sue them for any injuries that you've occurred or that you feel, and whatever they decide. When you go to court, you have that absolute right.
Thank you. Thank you for your candor. Thank you for your time.
Councilman Bird.
Thank you, Chair. And ma'am, one other question, everything that Councilwoman Coonrod put forward, but have you filed a complaint with Internal Affairs through the city?
I filed a complaint with Internal Affairs through the city. I'm now being advised to file more complaints with, with Hamilton, I believe it's Hamilton County.
Hamilton County.
I've reached out to Erlanger.
Good.
To investigate. They haven't returned my calls.
Okay.
It's, it's dragging along because I'm not really getting the cooperation from the entities that I'm, that I'm asking to investigate. And then it's all so daunting on my health because the stress exacerbates my illness. I, I'm publicly welcome to say, I have multiple sclerosis, and if anybody understands that, it, this stress, just me standing here, coming here.
Understood.
It's, it's a little difficult, and it's hard.
Listen, I totally understand, and definitely hate that you even had to experience anything like that in our city. We don't want anyone to experience that. We're working really hard to fix anything that is unbecoming, or put Chattanooga in a bad light. That's what we're here for, to do. And it's a process that things do have to go to. So just like Councilwoman said, please get an attorney, and anything that we can do, or that I can do to assist in helping you in this matter, you know, I'm always here, and I'd be a phone call away. But I do want to make sure that you did file the complaint with Internal Affairs, with the city, and with the county, and file someone a complaint with Erlanger, with MTS, if that's, if you haven't done that.
I'm working on the, now I need to work on the county.
Yes.
And, and still waiting back to hear from Erlanger. But I know this will be better. And I hope that one day I will be able to come here.
Yes.
And assist you all with whatever I can.
You just did. So thank you for even coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Gilbert.
Ma'am, I'm going to just sit down. Go ahead, sit down. I don't want you to have to sit back up. But make sure you check on the timeline that you can file anything, because there is a limitation on for how you can file. A lot of times, it's a year. So you might want to check into that first, hopefully this week, to see how long you got, so you can do well. If you're going to do, you can do it. Okay?
I'll, I'll be doing that as soon as I get back to my office. I'll be doing that as soon as I get back to my office in Atlanta.
All right.
Tomorrow, well, tonight.
All right, ma'am.
Is there anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you.
Sure. My apologies for the delay.
That's no problem. This is nearly as important as someone's health. I'm Peggy Petrie. I reside at 559 East Main Street, Chattanooga. Yesterday, hopefully you all received an email that our group sent out, and if you didn't, let me know, and I'll make sure you get a copy of it. We, at the suggestion of council members, start, began, we had been, we're kind of thinking about this and working on it, but as council, council has said that they're not hearing from the people who are for STVRs, short-term rental vacation rentals, as much as they're hearing from the opposition. So we formed a group, and we always had a Facebook group, but we weren't coming out like that. But, so we did form a group at the recommendation, and we have three things that we're hoping to, that this group can do. We're hoping it can inform the owners when there's proposed changes so that they can share their opinions with you. We're hoping that we will be invited to discussions that affect us and our businesses, and we hope to educate the other possible potential owners and the owners alike to provide them with information of, you know, meeting the permit process, to paying their taxes, to doing it legally. No permitted owner appreciates someone doing it illegally and setting a bad situation, a bad example for us, I guess I should say. So we're a group that really, the only people out in it are people who are permitted, owners. And we're in all different districts, and we're growing, and we have a survey out there right now, trying to get a gauge of what people feel about owner and non-owner occupied, not just from us, but from other people in the community. It's a citywide survey, and we'll share that with you. We've heard so many different things, and my letter mentions that, that you all hopefully received, different reasons why people don't like them. And one association has said that it's not even that we don't want non-owner, we want, we don't want them taking away rentals from other potential rental people. And the thing is, we have over 1,000, I don't know the number, coming on the market of apartments that are 30% occupancy empty, and they're renting to larger corporations who are now going to use those as Airbnbs. So one of the things about non-owner occupied is that I would hope that it would be equitable across the board if there's a ban on that. And the other thing I just want to say is, we really do believe that the neighbors and the owners can come together. We think that through many voices, ideas will emerge, it can be different for each community. I hate to see the baby thrown out with the bathwater, because I think that is part of the way we can grow our community, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Hi, my name's Daniel Benwell. I own a company, Current Technologies, from Laverne, Tennessee. I want to start by clearing my throat, of course. I want to say thank you to the city of Chattanooga for employing me for 23 years. I worked at the wastewater treatment plant doing thermography and vibration analysis. So I thank all y'all for supporting that. Here recently, last June, it was out for bid, and what alarms me, what brings me here tonight, is the concern for the monies y'all about to spend on this, because I did lose the contract because of, in my opinion, some unfair numbers were put in the bid sheet that drove my number higher, which was a hypothetical number, and I did address that on the bid sheet, if you look it up. So in realistic, I added up my 2018 year's cost for y'all was $30,000. And my alarm is, y'all just awarded it for $145,000. So my purpose is, is just to recommend y'all keep an eye out for that cost, and get it cheaper. Well, sorry. But that is my reason for coming, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, wait a minute, hold on, sir. Councilman Gilbert.
I need to speak to you. Yes, you. Go back to the mic, please. I'm kind of confused. You said that yours was $30,000 and $144,000, but you also said that yours was higher. Explain to me what you're saying.
Mine was higher because I, for years, I quoted this, and we quoted, the quantity was one, and then you quoted the hourly wage. Well, this time, the sheets put in 3,000 hours. I don't, I added all my hours up for 2018, I got 411, and they got 3,000 on the bid sheet. So I thought this was a joke. So I plugged in the numbers, I even made a note on it saying, this, this can't be right. But I lost the bid.
So in other words, you had this bid in the past?
Sir?
You had this bid in the past? Have you bid on this before?
Oh, yes, yes, I've got sheets here to prove everything, yes, sir.
So some of the rules changed on this last bid?
Yes, sir, on this last one, yes, sir. Very unfair.
I'm curious, I'd like to know the numbers, because it don't sound right. If it was, in the past, it was a certain number, then now it's jumped to 3,000?
Yes, sir.
Did that explain to you why?
No, sir. I got no reasoning for it, I don't understand it, because there is no way you can perform that service taking up that many hours. I mean, I did it for 23 years at 400 to 450 hours a year. That's for all of it. And you got 1,500 hours just for vibration analysis, 1,500 hours just for infrared. There's something wrong with this.
Well, Ma, can we get some, I mean, not now, but later on, can we look into this and see what happens?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir. Say anymore?
Okay, thank you, sir. Again.
Evening, council. My name is Robert Hanson. I live at 104 Bush Street. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the short-term vacation rental also. I'm currently in the process of going through the permitting process for a property, my former property where I lived at 1609 Long Street. And I wanted to say, right, I also sent you guys, every council member, an email letter, and I appreciate those of you who responded back to me, to my letter. My concerns are that I've heard rumblings through this grapevine from other owners and other people within the city that the, some members of the council and some members of the city are not supportive of non-owner occupied, short-term vacation rentals. And my former residence where I live, I intend to, I'm in the process of applying for a permit now to do a non-owner occupied, short-term vacation rental. And my concern is, is right now you have an ordinance that is working. I consulted with various members of, that have short-term rentals in order to make sure that I was doing things legally. I consulted with Caleb at the city office to make sure that I was applying for the proper permits and the proper licensing. So you have an ordinance that's working, and to hear that, that non-owner occupied's are under the radar, or on the chopping block again, or under the radar, I don't quite understand this, because I've done some research on my own, and I've lived in the city since 2016, and over half of the, half of the residences in the city now are non-owner occupied, they're rentals. Half of the housing is owners, half is non-owner occupied. So the short-term vacation rentals represents a miniscule amount of non-occupied housing within the city. I think someone told me there's 200, 250 permitted properties, and a lot of those are non-occupied. So right now, if I want to rent my property to Joe Blow for 31 days, I don't have to go through any kind of permitting process. I can rent it to whoever I like, there's no inspection, there's no anything. However, if I want to rent my property for 29 days, I have to get a permit, I have to have an inspection, I have to do all these things, which right now I have no problem with it, because I think your ordinance, as it currently is, is fair. It's fair to the property owners, it's fair to the community, it allows both sides to have a little bit of give and take. So what I am fearful of, and I don't want to see, is I don't want to see an ordinance that currently is working turned into a ban simply because of an arbitrary reason. I think that we need to go by the facts and look at this factually. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, councilman. My name is Betty Maddox Battle, and I reside at 2320 Greenwood Forest Drive, Chattanooga, Tennessee. I recently just moved back here after 40-some years from Atlanta, and I would be remiss if I did not say anything. And I sat there and I listened to this young lady. From what I heard, was very disturbing. I have over 30 years of law enforcement, and I'm also the mother of a son that was murdered in Atlanta in 1993. I have a homicide support group, which I am trying to get established here in Chattanooga since I have come back. And what I heard was very disturbing. This is one of the problems. You all sit there and you make decisions on people's lives, and what is going on in our city is it is paramount that we come together, the Oversight Committee, that's a good thing to have, but a police officer, we got to have somebody that's going to be transparent and be honest, upfront, and accountable. We've got good police officers, not only here in the city of Chattanooga, all over, but we also have some that has some issues. So we really need to take a good look at this, and you really need to think about what is going on, how can we correct that, and get to the bottom of what is going on. This, we do not fix it, it's going to happen again. I am so sorry, ma'am. From, you know, as a woman of color, and as a law enforcement officer, you know, I hurt, not only for the, the, the people that's experiencing, we got to make that connection with the police officers and the community, not only here in the city of Chattanooga, but all over the country, because they protect, they are sworn to protect and serve us, and they got a hell of a job on their hands. So I submit to you all today that we come up with some solutions and connect together, and I am here. I can always be reached with my organization. I would be willing to sit down, and, you know, I have already lined out what we need to do. We just need to implement, and I think that will be a good start. And I leave you with this. Dr. King said, you know, one time, "We must live together as brothers and sisters, or we perish together," I suppose. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. What is the will of the council?
We are adjourned.
We are adjourned.
I didn't want to say out loud, but any council person can act.